Brady?
Here.
John Schardtir?
Here.
Diane Dwyer, here.
Bob Eisner?
Here.
Mr. Capaluna?
Here.
Kevin O'Callen?
Here.
I'm sorry, I have some notice. Dr. Atwa?
Here.
Andy?
Here.
Dr. Schindler?
Uh, here.
I want to pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, I guess we're gonna start off with Dr. Atwa. We can put him on.
Absolutely. Uh, two things I just wanna mention. One is just an announcement, just, uh, good news today. Today, we closed with BLB Enterprises on the Brandon Fletcher Building. So that is closed, so we are transferring that building. They will begin, uh, we've let them, they've been working for six months on preparations. Uh, but now they're gonna be able to kick it into overdrive and, uh, they're hoping to have classes up and running in that building by, um, where? So that's their hope. Um, so, uh, I'd also like to introduce our new leadership team for our transportation department. Uh, Debbie Allen, uh, retired at the end of last year after a long and excellent career, and we're fortunate to have our department led by another local, uh, somebody who, uh, lives here in town, whose wife graduated, uh, from, uh, from Brandon High School, and, uh, somebody who has children inside of our school district. So leading our Brandon Transportation Department, we have Josh Thompson.
Hello, all. Thank you for having me. Thank you for Matt for already stealing some of my speaking points.
Sorry.
Uh, I'd like to thank, again, I'd like to thank you all for having me. It's nice to see some new faces and some of you I've met before. Some of you guys do well. We've been at some of the school events already. We were at, uh, the Oakwood Picnic and tops of the principals at Harvey Swanson. Um, my past work history, I've had eight years' experience in the shipping and receiving logistics, uh, department. I've worked over in Pontiac, we're a mail presorting company. So I am new to the school district itself, but I have a wealth of knowledge to bring along with me in the shipping and receiving and the customer service side of things. I feel like I'm really gonna excel at that. Um, as Matt said, I do live in the area. I've lived in Nortonville now for the past four years, and my wife, uh, grew up, born and raised here, all the way through kindergarten through, uh, graduating. I do have, uh, kids, or, excuse me, eight daughters, um, in the school system, and then two young boys who are not yet in school, but will be attending Brandon when they, uh, are eligible. Um, I am also new to First Student as well, so, again, I'd like to thank Jan and Matt for giving me, uh, the final sign-off on bringing me aboard. Um, feel very appreciative of it and excited to be here. Um, it's a very great feeling to, uh, to be working for your community and for a school system that, you know, my, my daughter goes to and that my sons will go to soon. Um, it's a very prideful feeling, and I like to incorporate that in my job on a day-to-day basis, try to strive to do the best I can for not only my kids, but every kid in this school and my community. Um, the, like I said, even though, uh, First Student hasn't gotten officially into its first school year yet, we have been, uh, transporting children this summer. We've been doing special education routes, and we started, uh, summer school this past week. Everything's gone really smooth so far, so we're hoping that the start of the school year goes the same exact way. Um, so, again, I'd like to thank you all for having me, and if you ever have any questions, any concerns, comments, please feel free to reach out. The transportation number is still the same. I'll be happy to answer any questions anytime. So, thank you guys very much. Nice to meet you all.
Just to let you know that it's, uh, there's a whole team that's working with, uh, Rick Morris, who's, uh, been in, uh, transportation for thirty-some years, is, uh, a regional guy. I was a very experienced person. Uh, he's been working closely with the team, and Doug Mead, no relation to Jan, uh, has also been, um, he's on the regional team. So there's a whole team that's been working on this transition, and, uh, I think you probably underplayed some of the details, the attention to detail that we've seen out of First Student. They're really making a lot of effort. Uh, Brandon Transportation Department is really making a lot of efforts, uh, to make that first days go certainly smooth, as well as the whole rest of the year, but, um, there are extra attentions for the region.
I'd like to add, I believe we're fully staffed, and we have, um, eight or so returning, returning drivers, such as great equipment mechanics, and, um, one thing they're doing that I thought was a little nice, all of the drivers will give me some personal calls to the kids that will be riding their bus and still walking them, and I felt that was a nice touch. Um, so they have really been working hard. And Rick is actually here full-time, every day for three months. We are not, and, I mean, that was, we didn't even realize we were getting that as part of a contract, so it was an extra, it's just, it's a really great, um, three-month side-by-side with Josh, so he's getting personal training. Josh was in Cincinnati for a whole week of training in July, so we're really, um, impressed with the, uh, training and the diligence and the commitment that they've made to our kids, our communities.
Excellent. Excellent. Okay. Public comments and questions on the agenda? Do we have any public comments or questions on the agenda business? Next up, um, up is to approval of the consent agenda. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Brandon, Board of Education, approve the consent agenda as presented.
For. Any discussion? All for it, say yes.
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 Uh, both? Any votes? The consent agenda has passed. Are there actions? Um, we have some information and discussing items. We're gonna introduce Jan for the next, uh, finance report.
Yeah, I'll be back tonight. Um, just wanted to let you know the audit is finishing up in, um, I expect, well, hindsight might say, and then I do need to follow up on the review standing forth, but they will be presenting in October. Everything is good. No surprises, so, um, that's always, uh, relieved. I spend all summer getting ready for them, right? So, it's really, um, in the waste water treatment plant, um, something's also done by, you know, later date, but that's your news. Um, I have it scheduled there. Uh, wanted to let you know, we'll put those every month now, talk to the board about who to be at. Um, Aqua Club is starting a, um, kind of a give-back, a wellness program for our staff, and all of our, we're starting the middle and high school teachers, they're gonna be offering a free, um, uh, fitness class, water aerobics, tight fitness class, uh, Wednesdays from three to four. We're gonna start it with the middle school. The elementary gets out later, so, um, that will be phased in, figuring out what we're gonna do there. And then everybody will be, um, available, everybody is, um, invited for pre-summer night on Wednesday night, too, and then they can also use the machine. So, that's something new. They're also introducing a, kind of a fit kids program, we're running through, moving it. So, good news there. Their numbers are creeping up little by little, so we're performing like, um, this is good. This is good. Um, other than that, summer programs are well-done. Our summer, um, lunch program, we didn't have as many kids as we had hoped, but we'll do it again next summer, because we went on a slight issue, you know? We went to the, um, Parkston, the Sashaw Meadows spot, and, um, there's so many kids that live there, so maybe we just need to do better marketing next year, but I think it's definitely worthwhile, if you have thirty or forty kids a day, as a kid might not have had a nice lunch. So, that's going well, and, uh, the, yeah, summer programs have gone well, we're looking at fall, brochure will be out, uh, the weekend, after later date, so, looking at some things there, some new things, and, uh, let's go, and we're getting some good suns for the classes. We have, um, about a hundred kids, including the high school, that did academic classes this summer, so we feel good about that.
Just out of curiosity, did you put a sign, uh, you know, say that, uh, the young lady in charge is in the pool area? Because when I walked up, I had no place, I didn't know where to go, to, to bring a doctor or anything.
I relayed the message, it's not up there, it will be. She responded, "X, that's a great idea, I'll make sure I do that."
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I got copied on Matt's email, so, and I did talk to her after you and I talked, and she definitely, they have a new system, a new phone system, I can give you the number, so that they will not miss a number or a call. It's a kind of a corporate thing, and hit one for Brandon, or whatever it might be, so, and they have somebody manning that, phone line, checking voice messages all the time. So in case Lindsay's not there, or she's, uh, or she's on vacation, we won't, you know, wouldn't have to wait two days to get a return call. Okay? So I think that's a big improvement from what we talked.
Okay.
Yeah.
Good. Our next discussion item is education report, Dr. Atwa and Dr. Schmittow.
That'll work, I know who I am. Okay. Okay, while we set up, I'm just going to, I'm gonna have Dr. Schmittow, uh, join me up here, and I want to just quickly introduce our, our educational leadership team here this year. Um, we have, uh, Dr. Schmittow was approved by the Board of Special Meeting, um, at the beginning of August. Uh, it's new to our team, coming up from Florida, and, uh, he's been off-running since August sixth. August sixth's been with us, leading the team. Also, we have Bob Larson in the back here. Bob, can you just stand up, wave, just to make sure everybody, Bob's been with the district, teacher, um, he's been an instructional technology coach for the last several years, and this year, he's picking up additional duties, really focusing on data, and as we talk about our plan for this year, uh, Bob and Dave are working really closely, but we're using the data, we really wanna get very, uh, drill really down to what the answers are for the district. We don't wanna be guessing at things, we wanna use the data to really help guide our decisions academically this year. Um, this is, so this is our leadership team here this year. Each year, somewhere in August, we talk about a big picture of what our plan is for the year academically. I'm gonna start off just a little bit, and Dr. Schmittow's gonna talk a little bit as well. Wanna start off with some review things, to make sure that this sits okay with the Board. Uh, starting off, we've had same district pillars for the last four years, quality in all that we do. If we do anything in this district, it has to be quality, number one. We're here to serve our families, number two, that's our second major pillar, and the third major pillar that applies to everything from academics to finances is that we have to continue to plan and look into the future, constantly planning for the future. Does the Board have any concern for those remaining, our pillars? The next part are the Brandon 2025 goals. Obviously, these were set up in the fourteen, fifteen school years, and these have been guiding us. Um, this is going to be the fifth year of our Brandon 2025 vision, and just putting it out there, um, we've been talking about bringing a group together to maybe refresh Brandon 2025 and look to the next ten years, so that we don't, we don't wanna wait ten years to tweak things. We're thinking maybe getting together and doing a review of our Brandon 2025 vision. Uh, but this is to be in the top twenty-five percent of the state, uh, preparing our students for the next level, we have specific tangible goals, we've had eighty-five percent of our students moving on to post-secondary education. Um, we're at about ninety percent right now, and then, this is an all-encompassing piece, uh, we wanna become an ever-increasing source of pride for this community. That has to do with everything from finances, athletics, uh, how welcome our students, how connected we are to the community. Some of these are measurable, others are not, but these are the goals that the Brandon 2025 committee identified. We have two big-picture areas that are, our focus is for us educationally. One, it seems simple, but high-quality core instruction. At the end of the day, instruction in the classroom is what really matters, we have to refine that, we have to maximize the instruction time that we have. Secondly is intervention. When students are not on track to success, what are we doing to help the students get back on track? Those are simple things, that's our ten-thousand-foot view. We have three very specific targets as we look at this school year. Three Ps. Jan, Jan said, "Oh, they're three Ps in a row," when we were talking about this here, and she's exactly right, but there are three things that we feel are really important for us. One of the things that we've been talking about is the value of the learning for the student, that they are not accruing points to get grades so they can go to college. We want them to talk a lot about how is it that we get students to learn for the sake of learning, for the love of learning. I wanna be in history class to learn about history, not to complete an assignment so I can get the grade and I can go on with my life. So, we're talking about goal-setting and a variety of other things there, trying to bring more value of learning for all of our students. We think that's a very important piece. Secondly is a concept known as productive struggle. This is one that is really a tough one, because when we see, you know, I have my daughter is, uh, my daughter's eight years old, she struggles a little bit with reading at times, and the truth of the matter is that when she's struggling productively, that's when the magic is taking place. That's when she's stretching, that's when her learning is at its maximum. If it's easy for her, the books that she's reading is not hard enough. So we've been talking a lot this year, and actually Debbie Brower really came on this last year, is who's doing the work in the classroom? Our teachers love our kids, they care so much about our kids, but sometimes they take the struggle away from the kid, that productive struggle, and that's where the magic happens in the classroom. So we're talking about this concept, who's doing the work, making sure that our students are challenged every day, uh, to do their best. And the last one is about prioritizing the highest-quality instruction time. We've talked a lot about maximizing our, um, efficiency with classroom instruction time. This is specific to the choices that our teachers are making during the course of a lesson. We need to leave behind the lower-quality activities that are taking instructional time, and we need to maximize times where students may be struggling productively during class. So, all of this together, these are major focus areas, these are areas that we would like to talk about in our collaboration sessions, like to talk about the teachers. Every teacher's at different points in this, but these are three areas that we think are very important as we look, uh, at this next year. How do we get there? I talked about data. The data is really important, and right now, we have state data that's not been fully released, but Bob and Dave and the principals have been working like crazy with data. What we wanna do is we wanna make sure that our specific targets in the classroom are connected with actual tangible, uh, results that we have from our students. Bob talks about triangulating, looking at NWA data, state data, common assessments, and looking at common patterns that we're finding, um, and using that to help advise our decisions. So data is gonna be very important, and Dave will talk about that in a moment. Our assessment program gives us the data that we need. We need to make sure that we have the right test at the right time, we don't wanna over-test people, and, uh, the third one there is about the best practices, coming back to that choice. Do our teachers know what the best, the highest-quality activities are that they should be doing in the classroom? Getting back to those best practices, uh, that will impact student achievement the most. Two others here, one is about our intervention program, what is it that we're doing with kids? Do you wanna get more systematic with that? Diane Sedan is going to lead a review of that, we wanna get very systematic with. Students struggling here, this is where they go. Students struggling mightily, they're going here. We're gonna, we have a lot of work to do in that area. And then our last piece here is the thing that brings it all together, is aligning professional learning with our teachers. This is our lesson plan. I wanna turn it over here to Dr. Schmittow.
All right. I'll go just as quickly. Um, one of the things that really impresses me, I don't know if you picked up on the slow queue, but as he was talking, he kept looking over at those people grouped over there, because they're the ones that made all this happen. Matt and I, we get to, sort of, do the PowerPoint and click and talk to you, but what's really exciting to me is working with these people, because they are amazing. If you don't know that already, they are, they're amazing. I have meeting them to death already, and they are hitting the ground running, just like, just like I am. This year, as we go through, you're seeing a theme here with three things on every slide. We're really talking about triangulating data, we're talking about three practices, we're looking at the power of three in almost everything we do. My job is to help us elevate our teaching and learning, our curriculum and our instruction. And as I go to my job, I have to constantly be assessing, is what we're doing working? Are we getting the biggest thing for our buck? Um, when, when we're talking about what I do, there are really three things that I can assess on a daily basis or on an annual basis. One is programs. Do we have the right classes and the right buildings to meet the needs of our kids? The other one is curriculum. Do we have the right resources to help support the teaching and learning that's taking place? And the third is pedagogy. Do our teachers have the skill sets required to reach the needs of each and every day? As we've gone through and started our data analysis, we discovered that this year, our big focus really needs to be on pedagogy. What happens in a lot of buildings, in a lot of districts, is we throw money at resources and programs, and we don't see those results, we start throwing money at new programs and new curriculums. Whereas, our teachers are here for thirty years, we're doing our job right, they're the ones we need to pour in our investments in. So pedagogy is what we're really focusing on this year, helping our teachers take it to that next level, helping them translate all their teaching and learning into the kids with that productive struggle, like Matt was just talking about. We have on here, just a, a quick little analogy, we talked a lot, uh, in education in the last two decades about the art and science of teaching. We're really talking about the art of teaching right now. We, I, I just use the example of Michelangelo. Michelangelo had the same block of stone that everybody else did, and he was able to create data. Our teachers have the same resources as everybody else, we're gonna help them become the next Michelangelo's. Um, what we're doing this year is we're really focusing on a tiered approach, and this is where that little two-page packet I have for you comes in handy. And this is a, the tiered approach is something that's already, um, known by the principals, it's already known by teachers, because it's something that they work with on a regular basis, with kids in classrooms, and kids in buildings, through what's called the MTSS or the RTI process. What happens is the classroom teacher says, "I'm gonna teach something to everybody. For small groups of kids that might not get it, I'm gonna tailor instruction to a small group, and then if there's individual kids that need even more assistance or more support, I'll tailor instruction to them." There's three different models to, to implement professional development, and that, or to model teaching. That's what we're gonna be doing this year. We're providing tier-one instruction to everybody in the district on a monthly basis. All buildings, all levels are gonna get, um, instruction on some concept that's rooted in the data that Bob's helping to, to uncover. Buildings are then gonna tailor that, that instruction to the needs of their own individual buildings. The principals are jumping all over this, and they're, they're already deep into working, planning professional development that's gonna be taking place in April, May, and June, even though we're only in August right now, because they're that deep into the data. And then taking it down to the teacher level, the teachers really looking at what their individual needs are, and assessing their data twice a month on meeting the goals, then again tie back to the district level. So it's this tiered approach, very systematic and consistent, so that no matter, um, where the kid is, we know that they're on course from kindergarten all the way through twelfth grade, to be getting high-quality instruction in every single classroom. Um, examples, again, I've got a sample for you, and that's truly a living document, I hit print on it this afternoon at about three o'clock, our principals are living in this document right now. It's that second page of that packet, where you can see where we have the, these three-hour blocks, basically, once a month, or, or frequent times throughout the year, where the district is providing professional development to all, all staff, um, in all buildings. Building principals then get an hour every month as well to layer that for their own individual buildings, based off their own individual data, and then the teachers are getting their own as well, twice a month. So it's supersized PD, and our teachers are gonna come out, um, way ahead, and we'll see that result hopefully with our kids, and, and if not, then we adjust, and we shift, and we constantly make improvements. Except this is a, a living document, we call it more the Constitution than the Bible, because we can add amendments, we can change things as, as necessary to meet our growing needs.
And, and these are, uh, themes that we've had the last five years, the professional fa, practices that we have to have that's gonna pull it all together. We've been talking about this concept, everybody in the district, from our students through all, everybody in the district, we all have to reform our personal best, we all have to be trying to get better every day. I'm not in competition with the person next to me, I'm in competition with myself, I need to have my best performance, number one. Two, we have a finite amount of time that we have to work with students, we have to maximize that time, we're talking about that quite a bit. Three, reflection, the difference between somebody that's good at anything and a person that's great at anything is reflection. People that are great, they constantly reflect, they constantly look at their practice, they constantly look at what they're doing, try to get better every single day. This fourth one here, we've talked a lot about this, but data, we really think that this, uh, investment in data, um, and getting that data really close to the individual teacher, it's gonna be absolutely key for us, so the use of data is gonna be, uh, the thing that's gonna really be, um, uh, essential for us to be successful. And the last one, same, last one, and the last one, gotta deliver the results. One thing to talk about this stuff, we gotta avoid excuses as a district, we gotta get the job done, bottom line, each one of us, take what we have and get it done. So those are the practices that we must have, um, in order to move forward. Uh, a theme that we're talking about this year, when we're talking to our students, talking about our students, is how much we believe in our students. Our students have great potential, great talent. We've seen it, you know, these kids coming in, doing these amazing things, um, each one of our students has great potential, and us, we have to express again and again how much we believe in those students, and we need to, uh, challenge them every day to reach their potential. So, looking forward to a great year, and we'll take any comments, feedbacks, questions, from the Board of Education.
Doctors, thank you very much. Dr. Atwa, I've had this conversation, so this is my particular take on things here. From a board member's perspective, you know, most of the time that we spend doing our job really is on running the businesses of the district. So there's things that come to us, regarding curriculum or academic things like that, that generally we rely on the experts, I'll say, far more than our own, my own at least, personal knowledge of the subject matter. One of the things that's happened over the last several years is that we seem to be surprised at the end when the test results come, and, and that's, that's a problem for me. You know, when, when the statement came up, deliver results and avoid excuses, to me, it's kinda like avoid surprises, and I'm hoping that, you know, and I'm saying this to all of you here, you know, the idea of data and, and, and bringing things to the forefront, I'm hoping helps us the way it should, because, you know, year after year, we, we think we're gonna be here, and we come in here, and we're surprised, we don't know how it happened, how it got there, so we're gonna do better next year. We need to somehow try to close that gap, because I think this district has done an excellent job of managing the district. I don't think we've done a good job of hitting our targets, and that's really what I mean by that, it's not, we set that target ourselves, right? We didn't, we didn't make it, and we're surprised at the end of why we didn't make it. We need to fix that somehow, take the surprise out of it. If we, if we didn't hit it, we need to know why we didn't hit it, rather than go on home, just go, "Oh, what happened, we'll try better next year." Because on that 2025 program, I mean, you know, we're coming to the end of 2018 now, we're, we're kinda heading up on it pretty quick, and I know we're not, you know, in the academic spot that we really planned to be at this point in time, or at least not at the rate, rate that we're due to. So, this isn't by all, by any means here, any kind of a, uh, a negative on what you're doing or, or being presented, I'm just saying that, from what I've seen, is that the surprises is what we need to minimize, and hopefully with, with the data that we're talking about and the things we're putting in place, we can at least get rid of the surprises so that we know why we're coming out the way we do, good, better.
Absolutely. Can I address that real quick? One of the things that you might have heard Matt talk about with great teaching, the, the secret sauce in great teaching is great reflection, and the ability to look at what you did and say, "Was that the absolute best I can do, and what can I do different and better?" Um, in education, not just here, Brandon, education everywhere, we're guilty of confirmation bias. We create our plans all summer long and say, "I'm gonna go into this year, here's all the stuff I'm gonna do. If the data doesn't support what I'm doing," took out push inside, "I'm just gonna keep looking for that data that supports all, all of my plans." And at the end of the year, "Oh, wow, it didn't work, and I don't know what to do, I'll, I'll just go and I'll do it better next year, with no real change or shift." Um, and, you know, I'm gonna point to Bob back there, and he's sitting in the back, but he's gonna be, he's gonna be in the spotlight a lot this year. I thank God that Bob's office is connected to mine, we've got this little conference room that we're wearing out a path between right now, because Bob's got a lot of nicknames already, but one of them is he's the magic mirror for teachers. He's the one that they can look to and say, "What do I really look like?" And he can provide that objective reflective lens and say, "Well, here's what the data says, and now let's have a conversation. Why is it so amazing? How can we do, get that in other rooms? Or what do we need to tweak and adjust?" Just face off the objective data. And that, that's his role. And then if we start to see trends and patterns, shift to me, and we talk to the principals and say, "Let's make things better." Thanks. Absolutely.
So, you have, what I'm saying is like, four groups of kids in the classroom, you've got teachers, you've got the kids that are accelerating, you know, how do you keep them to get them forward, and you've got the kids that maintain, you've got the kids that are on the border, they're just a little bit behind, and how to get them up to the kids that can maintain? And then you've got the kids that struggle, you say, you know, but how do you get the teacher to handle all of that? You know what I mean?
Yeah.
I mean, there's got, what plan do you have in place that, that helps the teacher meet that goal?
And, and, you know, that's a, that's a great question, because it, it doesn't just go from Bob's hands to the teachers, that, and then say, "Here's your data, figure it from Bob's hands to the teachers, that, and then say, here's your data, figure it out. I mean, the, the secret is in all of this training that we're trying to provide all year long, and for the next 30 years in a teacher's career. We know that veteran teachers have more tools in their toolbox, because they've had the experiences and that feedback from their successes and their failures, and that's, that's really our job. One of the things I'm excited about this year is being able to work with all of our prin, all of our principals who are, like I already said, amazing, they all come from a vast array of experiences, and they're gonna be working with each other intimately to help every single building grow and flourish together. They know the needs of their individual teachers, teachers know the needs of their kids, collectively, we're all gonna come together, and that, that's really where we're going this year, is we're all in this together, and we're gonna be working on it, like, from pre-K all the way to 12th grade.
Yeah, you got one teacher, you got anybody helping the teachers meet that goal, or you got, you know, I mean...
So, so some of that, when you talk about differentiation, as they get a little bit older, sometimes the class selections help to narrow that gap for differentiation, I'll use an example, in ninth grade English, you have honors English, you have regular English, so some of those super high flyer students are in a class together, where that gap is, you have, you know, middle kids up through your high-end kids, and then your regular class, you don't have those high ends, so you're able to adjust a little bit, but it is a challenge, and, you know, I think this is my 23rd year in education, we've been talking about this every single year, how do you meet the needs of kids that are so different? Every kid's different, even an accelerated student, they're accelerated, maybe have a whole bunch of things, but are we challenging them to, you know, to reach their potential? They started the 90th percentile, they dropped to the 85th percentile, the state doesn't notice them, but at least it talks about this quite a bit, that, that's a failure on our part, we have to challenge that student to continue to move forward. So, John, I think the answer is, there isn't an easy answer to that. And they call it differentiation, but it's one of the things that teachers struggle with, and in their planning, they constantly work on meeting the needs of so many of the different students, but it's not a program thing, but it is a challenge for teachers.
Do you have students helping students too, or do you have that program still, or...
And so, that's exactly what you were talking about, I'm glad you used the term program, because that's a piece of it, absolutely, the programming is a piece of it, but even beyond that level, it's down to that individual teacher's need, because they could have a program of 30 kids that we scheduled into one course, but there's 30 different kids in that course as well, so.
I have a question for Bob.
Sorry, Bob.
Where are you getting your data from? How are you pulling the data on every child?
Sure, certainly, yeah, I can come up and... Sure, so we have different sources of data that we use to kind of work with kids, see what their needs are, and see, you know, what our next steps are for them. So one of the big ones we use is NWA, so we store all that in, in our data warehouse that we have, we have Mstep data, you know, and then we have like our local data, so things that teachers report out, if either your grades or, you know, different standards-based things that they mark the kids on. So our big job this year is to take all those things, and we use a system called Luminate to kind of marry it all together and look for trends in that data. So we can look at things like strand data from Mstep, you know, breaks it down into strands, different, you know, areas like geometry, you know, in math, you have geometry, problem solving, that kind of thing. And we're gonna look for those, those spots where we can get better, and then we're gonna work kind of from a district view to look at, what can we do better overall, to that building view, to the local, like where we can work with a classroom teacher, that teacher will be able to look at their kids and say, these are the kind of things that I need to focus on next in my classroom, or next with this group of kids, or provide some information to an interventionist that can work with a group of kids. So that's where we get our data, and then we put it all together to do action.
Thank you very much, really excited about this year, I think we've got a good plan and we're gonna go deliver, so, all right, thanks everyone.
This time we move to our action items, and our first one is to have a motion to approve the food service proposal.
I move the Brandon Board of Education to approve the food service meal price increase as recommended of $3 in the lower grades and $3.25 in the upper grades.
Any discussion?
Yeah, this was from the court session, this is mandated, we have to be in compliance with the law, so I think that's an important piece. We've been told by the orders that we must make changes to the pricing.
All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Any one opposed to say no?
No.
Can I have a motion to approve the food service proposal?
Oh.
Okay, I got you. Motion to approve the board meeting dates, sorry?
Move that the Brandon Board of Education approve the dates added to the 2018-19 Brandon Board of Education regular meeting schedule as presented, January 14, 2019, change from the 21st, January 21st, February 11, 2019, March 18, 2019, and 18, 2019, May 21, 2019, and 18.
Support.
Any discussion? Just mentioning two things, a change in January is from Martin Luther King Day to a week prior, the reason for that was there's a number of people that did not work on that day, and we want to make that a productive meeting, so if we do it on the 14th, everybody's working, we'll have everybody on it, on deck, ready to be part of the meeting, and the same thing for the following month, from President's Day to the 11th, so it's one week prior to those national holidays.
Any favor say yes?
Yes.
Any one opposed, say no? The board meeting dates has been passed. Next one, can I have a motion to approve the human resource report?
Move the Brandon Board of Education approve the human resource report as presented.
Support. Discussion.
I'm gonna have Diane Jumari coming up and just briefly talk about Jillian, what's her last name, sorry, I just met her today, Diane is hiring...
I've been interviewing all day. Jillian, help me. What is it?
I met with her this afternoon, I did not write her name down.
I decided if I...
We had this as a placeholder, we have some interviews that are going on right now, we're hiring for kindergarten, because our kindergarten enrollment is so high, that we're hiring for that, and Coach Stewart, Debbie Brower have been working really hard on that, we have two specialist teachers that we are hiring, and two preschool teachers. So Diane, just tell us about Jillian.
Tell us the first name, okay. Okay, yeah, here we are.
So Jillian comes to us from the Huron Valley School District, she was a specialist teacher, she was at the elementary level, and was a specialist teacher there prior to being in Huron Valley, she was in a charter school several years, with, at a middle school, I would say, she had middle school experience and elementary experience. Now with her today, really sharp, I apologize for not remembering her last name.
Keke.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lori.
I apologize for that. Very student-centered, somebody who feels passionate about kids.
She, she really has a lot of passion, she talked about some of the cool things that she does with students, she walked in, speaking of data, she walked into our interview with a she, with all the growth, the student growth that her students had done, she made the most growth of all the students in Huron Valley last year. And I'm like, whoa, I mean, graphs and charts and everything, and so, that's what we're looking for, we're looking for someone who is gonna use the data to improve instruction, and special education students is an area that we really do need to ask other students, but we really want to make sure that their levels of academic instruction and their growth are there, so, looking forward to her being here. Haven't quite placed her, she's gonna be in our department, and so I'm still hiring people, so I'm just trying to find the best match for the, the person, but we knew that we wanted her in our department, so we've hired her. And I think she'll come to the next meeting with a lot of the other new employees, okay?
Okay.
Thank you.
All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Any one opposed, say no? The approval of our human resource report has passed.
Just on the same topic, is we, we're going to have four or five more people that are gonna be hired over the next week.
Week?
I, probably, in the next week or so, we're gonna have, so, I'm gonna need to reach out to the board with some feedback about when we want to get together to, to approve those people, maybe if it's a chance for us to go on another topic at the same time, because our next board meeting is not till September 20th, and I know that people are allowed to work prior too, but just want to throw that out there, that we have small people to approve, they're just, we're, they're late hiring, and we have some late vacancies, so, thank you.
You ready? Any citizens in input at this time?